Good evening to the Brookfield Board of Selectmen's meeting of Tuesday, January 28th, 2020. If you would like to rise and join me in saluting the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I would like to have a motion to approve an expense and a payroll warrant.
Motion to approve?
Second.
One twenty-eight twenty, that's an expense for five hundred and twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred and eighty-three dollars and nine cents. Approve a payroll warrant for one twenty-nine twenty for a hundred and sixty-four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-six dollars and twenty-five cents.
You had a motion and we passed it, so.
All in favor?
For second.
For announcements, we have brush burning permits for the outdoor burning of brush and forestry debris are available until April 30th. To obtain permits, visit C A burn permits dot com. Our colleagues dispatch at five oh eight eight six seven ten sixty-six between the hours of seven thirty and noon on the day you want burned. Senator Goby's aide will hold office hours in the Brookfield Town Hall from two to three P M on.
February 5th, I shouldn't say tonight.
On February 5th. Any other announcements by anybody?
Have we heard from the town clerk yet what date they're releasing papers for folks that are not.
Usually in February.
Yeah, I know it's usually in February. Usually the information's out by now about when it's going to get released.
Okay, one question.
Maybe we can get a list of what's open.
Oh, because I, one question I just wanted to ask real quick, can. Okay, can people run on Sundays too?
Yes.
Oh, they can, because I didn't think they could years ago.
Years ago. Maybe years ago they couldn't, but now.
But now they let them?
Yeah, we can drink on Sunday.
Yeah, I've asked for a couple of permits on Sunday, actually.
All right, we have our first is streetlights discussion. Okay. At our meeting last annual town meeting, we voted to to rosene appropriate the money of two thousand dollars to place additional streetlights. Throughout the town with the location and type of these to be determined by the board of selectmen, and it was two thousand dollars. Some of the two thousand was used for the Quabog Lights, and there will be more than one half of the money left after Quabog Street. We've used them all up, and I guess what they wanted to get was five new streetlights, three.
Not everyone, this is what Mr. Cook.
Well, this is what Mr. Cook is saying.
Right.
He would like to have three at the Murray Bridge and two on the Mill Street and River Street, and the total cost to run would be nine oh five per year. And our highway superintendent does not think it is necessary, and Chief Blansett said he does not see that that would help our traffic problem at all.
Well, two got added at Mill Street, there's one at the other end of the bridge now that weren't there.
Yep.
So we have, we covered those. So the last time I talked to Mr. Cook was that he was looking for lights at Rice Corner and Rice Corner and Gay. And Rice Corner, Rice Corner Cross, Rice Corner and Gay. And I suggested that he talk to the highway superintendent as far as the recommendations. What, the last I.
See anything here about.
That's what Cindy came down with.
No, there's nothing, this was Cindy, I was just looking, he didn't say anything about.
She heard of that, because I asked her about these two locations, about Murray Bridge and mostly Mill and and one forty-eight. That's when she told me the recommendations of both of them, so does anyone know about them?
So the only, the latest location recommendation is at Wagon Wheel. Because there's, there, as you go down the hill or up, coming up the hill, just as you enter the Wagon Wheel area, there's a little side cutoff into Wagon Wheel, and it's dark.
Yeah.
And so if if Ryan or Cindy had a preference, that would be a place for an additional streetlight. So if we wanted to make a decision tonight, I would say to go forward with that light as recommended by the highway superintendent.
I'll make a motion for that.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
One light?
Yeah, just one light for now, and then see where we are with the bill, and if we've got some more money, fine, do some more.
All right, second thing on our agenda is shared services discussion. Laurie had, this came, Karen had sent it, and then I guess it had gone to you, Clarence. And Laurie, Laurie had said that she says there were no shared services currently in any area towns for major positions, but suggested sharing some of the smaller portions such as animal control officer and different inspectors might be a good idea.
Yeah, so.
So I don't know if you want to take the rest of this over.
Uh, okay, well, two choices. So what this was, was C M R P C looking to do a survey as to shared services. And what, what I would do is if, based on Laurie's recommendation, I would fill out the survey to that effect as to the several shared services that we might be interested to talk to other towns as far as sharing. So I will do the survey if that's what you like.
Okay.
All right, so.
All right, so that's it on that.
So if you, yeah.
You want to look at any of this?
No, yeah, let me borrow the.
Sure, you can take it.
Let me, I'll bring this back to my own.
Sure, no problem.
Oh, I don't need, I can reprint it, you can have that.
Okay, because I'll just do the survey.
Okay.
Based on Laurie's recommendations.
Third thing is budget priorities for state earmarks.
Yep.
All righty.
We need Peter Black.
Okay. Kathy La Rock, you had sent this to Kathy.
Yep.
Yeah, and we meant, and I guess you recommended that items to be added to the board of selectmen's agenda for a discussion this evening. And so some of the ideas here.
Come up here, Peter, this is your, your topic.
Okay.
Those are some of the ones that we submitted, some, those are the ones we've got the feedback back on.
Some of the different things would be computers for town hall, fire, highway, and the library, that's what Kathy says.
Yep.
For that compliance with the, the capable of handling Windows 10.
Yep.
And then air compressor for Peter, and that would be sixty-two thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars.
Compressor or a generator?
Um, there's two, if I may.
It says air compressor here.
Air compressor, we were told by our vendor that the air compressor that we use to fill the breathing air tanks, the manufacturer's no longer in business, their service, you know, service dependency issues. We're actually going to pursue that, the announcement came out today that the federal grant where we got the air packs opens in first week of February. So I'm actually going to play off the fact that, well, you bought us these, this is the next progressive thing, we'll hope for the best, so I can forego on that. Our vendor is pretty good on, you know, duct tape and baling twine in terms of keeping things together, so it's not an emergent thing, and it's not as old as some of them I've seen, so the compressor, I wouldn't, if, if we have a one shot with, with the senator's office, I wouldn't do it on that. I'm going to look at the federal funding aspect of it.
Now, what about the generator? Did you get a new generator? Because there's been different people who had concerns, they said that the generator you have now, it's been outside in the rain.
It's outside because the, as part of the electrical program we're doing at the station involves the, we've got great support from the Tantasc Electrical Division, which their field instructor is our wiring inspector, Scott Mansfield. So it just works out really well, he's working with our contractor, and the kids are doing a lot of work for free. In part of that, he happened to see for the first time, he got a good look at the generator that we had. Now, the generator we had, we got surplus from the phone company, which I think was Verizon at the time, no, AT&amp;T at the time, about twenty-four years ago, and he looked at it and realized that it was a vintage from the nineteen sixties, and it, his thought is it never should have been put in the building. It was this, it was built for the phone company in that timeframe when anybody operating it would have known exactly. Everything's variable, you look at a generator now, there are no switches, it turns on, it turns off. This one you can actually adjust if somebody were to bump into it, and it's above my, my scale on it. You can adjust the voltage, you can adjust the frequency of the electrical output, and his thought right then is you shouldn't use it, you should, it never should have come in here. We made, not knowing that over the years, we made it work, we have only had a couple of issues with it over the years. And the timing of it was kind of impeccable because I had electrical people there, in fact, I also had the heating contractor there that was fueled by that, and Scott said, there's no way to make that better, there's no way to make it safer, make it applicable for here. Get it out of here as soon as you can, and he said, definitely don't use it. Well, we're in the midst of doing all this, so I've got electrical people that can disconnect it. I asked the guy from McDonald Heat, do you have five minutes to disconnect the fuel lines? He said, yeah, sure, so we did that, Ms. Pampryon from Highway was nice enough to come up, pull it out, and in fact, I understand the email from Karen, there was talk about, you know, putting it out for bid, and Scott, Mr. Mansfield even said, you shouldn't even sell it, you shouldn't take the liability. Somebody said, well, it's a really nice diesel motor, somebody wants to take the generator off. Scott's point was, it's not safe, it's really not safe for anybody just because they got the high bid. You know, if you could target it and say only to a qualified whatever, but his, his thought is just scrap it.
Okay, so we just bring it down to the landfill?
Um, the thought on the landfill is it would go.
Wouldn't it be metal recycling?
It would go to, yeah, it would end up there, um, at the transfer station, it would just go in one of those very large dumpsters, and that could actually cause a problem with, I think, Mr. Dupree, Dupree from North Brookfield hauls it out.
Wouldn't we want to just take it direct, see if the highway department can take it direct to one of the.
Somebody's from highway, highway department over uses, use the facility in Charlton, where actually Dupree takes their material. So, yeah, bypassing that, there you're going to put it in a thirty-yard dumpster that a truck has to waste up, and it's really not practical too. So if we're going to move it to eliminate any future issues with us or a vendor, yeah, we'd be better off if, you know, when Ms. Pampryon can work it in, if he's doing a scrap run with old signs and old posts and everything, we could work it in with that, or a special trip where he just puts it in the truck, takes it, and offloads it from there.
Do we want to take an action to just scrap it? Do we recommend to you to scrap it through Brian?
I would defer on Mr. Mansfield's.
I think we need to vote it as excess and then authorize, so I'll make a motion that we, we vote that the generator be deemed excess.
Surplus.
Surplus property, and that it be disposed of not through municipal bid, but to avoid any potential liability risk that it be brought directly to a scrapyard when, when there's resources available.
I'll reach out to Ryan in the next couple of days.
Go second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
So that being said, it left us without a full-service generator.
Yeah.
We have a generator, a power failure generator that we funded about twenty-one years ago that is now natural gas, that just runs certain key functions, you know, some lights come on, there's the garage short, just basic things, so the two in the morning we lose power and don't know it, but if something were to happen large scale, then luckily, this isn't the winter we seem to be worrying about that, but that's a big change, you know, on a twelve. Yeah, when you, when you look at your Facebook feed for memories, that's what's coming up now is what happened five years ago, twelve years ago.
Now, what about all your radio systems and everything, what takes care of that?
That's on that generator, that generator, it's, it's small enough that it can't do everything, but we, it worked it out large enough that, you know, if nothing else, if something happens and the power fails, if the power fails in the center of town, maybe only a couple of our people know it, but the radios would be up, so we'd still be alerted to the fact that something happened, we could get up here, and there may be a slight delay because we, the facility isn't fully functioning, and then it goes for the larger part of it. So an accidental offense on the whole thing, when we were doing the electrical project, getting it set up, working with Mr. Mansfield, him wearing both hats, he looked at what we were doing, and he realized, well, someday you're going to get a bigger, not bigger, but a better generator, not taking a good look, and he said, yes, that's our, our goal, our hope. He said, well, there's one piece of equipment, we, we're not putting on the bill of materials for this project, and that's a transfer switch that automatically recognizes how power coming in, generator comes on, he said, if we're doing all this work, why don't you buy the transfer switch now, it's easier to install now while we've got everything taken apart. So we did that, not knowing, you know, that Scott was such a soothsayer on the whole thing that it would be this soon. So the project, right off the bat, is easier to encompass because, again, we had no idea, we were thinking, okay, in a couple of years, we'll really look at it, we could, a couple of needs checked off the list, but, so that's why the project, the estimate that himself and a contractor came up was about fifty-three thousand. That's subject, but just wanting to get a number out there as soon as I can, that's just the way I like doing it, you know, research shouldn't take out as much as.
Do we know what the highway generator wound up actually costing?
Um, if I may through the chair, I asked Laurie that same question, the project started at thirty-nine, they have seven thousand dollars left. So that was thirty-two. The quote, the invoice for that generator was about thirty-two. So it looks like everything they, all the site work, the, the location did change from the original plan to where it is now, but all the materials, all the site work, all the electrician and plumber costs seem to have been absorbed by highway. It doesn't look like they, they, that they set the project up to be a soup-to-nuts operation, they bought the generator, and then through their expense account, they did all that.
Okay.
So it's, from a, from a generator standpoint, we have a number, but from a complete, you know, projects, project thing, we don't.
Got it.
And there.
So is the fifty?
There is a three-phase, and before anybody asks, I know I would, the fire station is two-phase, the town hall is three-phase on the last upgrade because of the hope for an elevator. So as much as I would like to get a generator, you know, go that next step on generator and be able to energize the whole four and six Central Street compound, we can't.
Right, because, because all of yours is.
Right, we're all two-phase, and the police stations is already in, it's small enough to run their facility, nothing else, because that's come. The old generator we had many, many years ago ran both complexes. Everything at four Central Street, everything at six Central Street, but that was before the town hall was ramped up to three-phase, my understanding.
So do we need to, you, you have a fifty-three thousand dollar kind of all-in number?
Yes.
That if we were to suggest to the governor, the senator that we needed an emergency generator because of what we've just learned?
Yeah.
The, the fifty-three would be a good number to.
I think it would be a good number, I can look at what we're going to have left from our project, because the other thought too is, I don't, well, just from history, we know how long it takes the state budget of the state to do anything, find a budget, never mind supplemental. If we were still to, at least pursue it as a, as a, as a whole in place for an annual town meeting, that number could be worked on from fifty-three, I'll see what's left at the end of this project, see if Ms. Pampryon's done with his funding, and then we could transfer some of that around or intermunicipal transfers. There's only one more today from Laurie on that, so, and even looking at some other options for moving some around, creating an account for that, or even, well, it's not fleet, but, you know, there's no capital, there's no C I P C funding beyond fleet at this point, so, without stabilization, so.
No, but, but we do fund a municipal property, and typically it's assigned to the town hall, but we do have a line item in the budget for, for municipal property maintenance.
So.
You have that account, but, you mean, you mean fund it, you should buy that, I mean.
No, just, as the year winds down, if we have places where we have money that isn't going anywhere.
Oh, right.
Remember at the meeting earlier, Laurie said, well, we're not going to do a special because the state doesn't let us manage our own money. If we had a place to do it through an intermunicipal transfer, something that, especially if Laurie was okay with, yeah, you can do that, and then we'll know where it's coming out of in fiscal twenty-one.
Right.
So, you know, if that's the case, then some of that fifty-three would come down, and lo and behold, Senator Goby comes through, that account is so much the better, you know, you guys can do windows, and somebody can do windows.
So that, that is, that would be something to consider is to, is that, and I think, I think that's where breaking out your project plan where it might be worthwhile to say, okay, the site work, and this is where from a funding perspective, the generator versus the site work, the piping, the wiring, it might be worth it to actually split those into two separate things. The generator money as a capital article necessarily, that site work being something that gets funded to the, to the property improvement account, in essence earmarked for the work associated with the generator, and then that way, if you come in under budget or something else comes in under budget, that it puts us in a situation where we have some flexibility within the year in order to address other needs at the same time, so.
So where I'm headed with this thing, my thoughts are that the idea of an earmark that might be possible that we put forward, the, well, we've got a couple of talk, discussions, other things to discuss as well, but I'd, I'd put this thing through, through at the fifty-three.
Right, absolutely, to cover everything.
To cover everything, and just say, oh, by the way, we just found this out, have Peter write a nice little note as he did the last time for the, the twelve thousand dollars. And if we go down this path, Peter, that we'd go down and we'd ask for this fifty-three. Failing that at town meeting, we would be prepared to take an action to move forward with the new, if the earmark didn't come through.
Yep.
So this is, this has got to be somewhat of a priority of the ask.
And setting myself back from the product, I looked at some of the other proposals going in, and I said, well, and this didn't come from me, well, maybe they'd fund half the fire truck, the state does not want to go on record that they're willing to set aside money for three hundred and fifty-one fire trucks. Even the computer project, great idea since we didn't get that grant, but did they want to go on record? Oh, put money in, we'll buy you all the computers, because there's three hundred and fifty other communities, I guarantee they could use more computers than we do. So there's some things that, they like the small projects, you look at some of the stuff over the years, they gave a bunch of money to East Brookfield for their anniversary, they rebuilt the fountain on Westbrook Field Common, you know, things like that, something that, that, that senator can go and.
And not every, but that not everybody is going to ask for.
Right, it's, yeah.
It's the, the last set of earmarks that went through, the largest one was in the fifties, as far as fifty thousand dollars, so this would be a perfect one. Kind of throw out this as a larger one, and then, and.
Have a backup plan.
And have, have a couple of other backups, and I've got a couple of.
And just like I'm going to tell FEMA, well, you bought me air packs, I would be able to fill them, now we can say, and you bought me an electrical panel, but I don't have any power to put to it.
So I think this, this, the generator is kind of like high on the list, now you have it, do you have a couple more?
Oh, this is from Peter O'Connell, he's at Senior Center.
Yeah, and again, that's going to be big bucks.
And then he said the Felton Heller House, new fire engine, and Tobin Campground, that's what Peter has.
Right, and we're already looking for monies in other places for Tobin.
Okay, and then the highway department has a survey and design of Gay Road, which would cost about thirty thousand.
Right, so we, and again, Cindy's got a nice note here as far as the thirty thousand for engineering, because Ryan's going to fix up at Rice Corner to get that drainage moving in the right direction, but then the next stop is down the hill onto Gay or through Gay and, and out, and so that's where the thirty thousand dollars comes from. So, again, that, it, it's something we need to do, what we have, and Sharon has someone coming to the planning board meeting here in a week that's talking about a development on Gay Road or Gay, Gay Road Sturridge Line, and so if that were to move forward, if it were to move forward, we'd definitely need to be doing something with the roads. And that, again, until we kind of understand that, I, I think that that's a second priority, at least in my opinion, to the generator. And then I had one other, ADA ramp at South Pond, David Ayers had pressed as hard as he could to see what we could do to get some money to have an ADA compliant ramp, if we don't do anything, the ramp's going to wash away anyway. So what I was proposing is we throw two at the, the senator, the generator for sure being the highest priority because of what we now know. And then the second would be, and I'll call it a regional project, and Ryan estimates that that ramp would cost, if we did the work, would cost about twenty-five thousand dollars, so I'd throw that as a regional project and see if she was interested to fund a regional project. Or as a regional project, so that, those would be my, it would be my recommendation, we have Kathy work with Peter.
Yeah, I agree with that.
To generate a litter to talk about those two projects and get, get it in front of the senator. One motion to that effect?
So, so you're saying just the ramp and the generator, or you're saying the ramp, the generator, and the survey, the engineering survey? All three in front of them?
Maybe, yeah, what we do is, yeah, let's put all three.
Honestly, I think that the Gay Road is almost regional too, if one of the things it's supporting is going to be.
Good point.
That, that development, potentially, right?
Yep, yep.
So, I don't know if it's close enough, I don't know if that site is close enough to the town line to be considered regional, but that whole Gay Road corridor.
Half the guy's property is in Sturridge.
Well, there you go.
The entrance is going to be Gay Road, if it's going to be anywhere, but the, the property.
Will any of the homes be in Brookfield?
So I don't think it, I don't.
Be half and half.
I don't think it hurts.
Who knows until we get this guy in here?
I don't think it, it hurts to ask for three discreet, relatively modest projects and see what the answer comes back.
Okay.
So probably maybe.
So those are three, I'll work with Kathy and Peter.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, work with him, of the three, you could work with, work together, and then maybe have her ready for the next time her aide gets in here?
Yes.
In February.
That was the idea, yeah.
Did, so C I P C, and I missed, I missed the meeting this, this last month. Did they have a specific recommendation about something else to earmark, and it was those larger dollars?
The, the big bucks.
Yeah, they wanted, like I said, the Senior Center, Felton Heller House, new fire engine, and Tobin Campground, that's what they had.
Okay.
Right.
Do we want to put one of those as number four and just, just put a big dollar, or you're saying that the last time, the biggest thing was fifty?
Last one was fifty grand.
I don't, I don't think I would, I think I'd put those three on.
Go for the things that are, go for the things that are more likely to get approved.
Yeah, we've got something that's an emergency-related thing, something that might be a couple of regional things that would improve things.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's, I think that's a good message to send, right?
That's what I would do, just those three.
All right, good, then that's what we'll do.
May I, can I ask you a question to Peter? What, do you put a new generator in right now, in the firehouse now, is what you're doing now?
If we were able to secure funding one way or another, there would be a new generator, it would be similar in design to the one that the highway department put in, so it's more designed to stay outside, and that would work out well because it would be natural gas-fed from the line behind the building.
But I mean, what do you mean normally, you get a new generator now, or you just took the old one out, did put one in?
No, we took the old one out because it was deemed unsafe.
And you haven't put one in yet?
We have not put one in yet.
Oh, I see, okay, everybody says in town that you put a fifty-three thousand dollar generator in, and that's where that comes from.
Yeah, I'll, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, all right, so we're going to go see if we get fish for some.
Okay, do we need to make a vote on that?
Okay, so, yeah, so what we'll do is a motion to move forward with the suggestion for earmarks of an emergency generator, improvements, engineering for the improvements to Gay, I'll say Rice Corner slash Gay Road, and an ADA compliant ramp for South Pond Beach.
I'll second that.
Especially if you get Don Taft and Q Q O A to.
To support.
To do something on the ramp thing too.
Oh, yeah.
You know, from the sportsman's issue, you know.
Yep, well.
If Dicky Wood was still alive, we'd have the perfect spokesman for it.
Yeah, well, unfortunately, we lost David Ayers to the beach committee for the simple reason he just got so frustrated with wildlife. This will be a way to get around and do what he wanted to do, so, good, got it.
Okay, thank you, Peter, for arguing.
We need to vote that one.
No, that's it.
Oh, yeah, we need to vote.
Oh, yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next thing on our agenda is snow and ice deficit, deficit for, from the highway. We got something from Cindy this morning, and she's requesting to deficit spend snow and ice by thirty thousand dollars.
Motion to, uh, approve.
I mentioned that to Laurie, and she said that would be fine.
Well, second, I, I do want to say is that I'm okay with us approving this tonight, but I would ask that we get the details of the expenditures thus far, anytime we have a request like this. And I know they track it very carefully down at the highway, so I, I trust that they've done the math in terms of that the thirty thousand will take them the rest of the way that they need to get to. But I would, I, I know for a fact in order to get that through the advisory committee, they're going to need to submit the, their record of the expenditures thus far, so, so, I mean.
I'll write an email to Cindy.
Yeah, I, I did actually already ask for it.
Oh, okay.
Once I saw it this evening, but.
Usually she does, she usually does.
She usually attaches it.
She didn't, and then she responds, yeah, she.
So she was probably in a hurry, so, but, but when that request goes to advisory, they really need to attach the, the, where they're at so far.
Laurie said one thing, she thinks that they should be putting in more money for snow and ice deficits. so that we don't, I mean, with snow and ice, so that we don't have these deficits every year.
Well, good for discussion.
That's what she thinks, because I talked to her about that today. That's her suggestion. So we have a vote on that?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think that's worth a discussion. I think the challenge with that is that, once you budget money into snow and ice, you can't reduce the budget, like by state law, once you fund it to a certain level, you can't reduce it.
So it has to go through.
Yeah, we had this debate a year ago.
Yeah, or two.
And we opted not to do that.
Yeah.
And that's why we.
Yeah.
And this number is lower than last year.
Yeah, I think last year we overspent like sixty grand, like the last couple of years, it was like fifty, sixty grand. This year, this year, that thirty grand may actually get us through the end of the year. So how much do you increase it, right? So we might be at a point where we should increase it maybe twenty or twenty-five, but even that would be a push because if, if some of the work that Ryan is doing right now, a good example is, we spent like sixteen thousand dollars to put the meters on the trucks, right? For controlling the salt, right? Next year, we're not gonna have that expense, and we're gonna be using less salt. So, we may want to be careful, I guess, is what I'm saying, of increasing the funding to snow and ice.
Worth a discussion.
Yeah, okay.
All right, moving on.
Moving on.
Annual town meeting.
The new, yeah, it's a set for the town meeting. We, at our meeting today with the advisory board and all the department heads, it was very good meeting. A lot of input we got from different people. And so when it came time to talk about a date for annual town meeting, we were talking, and we said, how last year, I guess, Dave, didn't you put a box out last year? Didn't you put a box at town meeting to see what nights people wanted, and Friday was still a good night? Well, what was suggested today, that we do the budget on Thursday evening, and then we'll go right into the next night with everything else. And then if we need another night, we'll just have to do it. So, get things done in two nights.
If we manage ourselves.
Yeah.
So the people aren't up at midnight.
Yeah, that's what we, oh, that's what we already said. Like, with Thursday, we'd probably just do the budget, just get through the budget.
Would you do that, or, we have, for two years now, we've done non-budget and then moved into budget.
Well, maybe we can talk more about that later.
Okay, but two nights, all right.
Two nights.
Yep.
And so.
Linda, let me give you this calendar.
So we. Okay, because we had talked, we talked about, okay, for June, we talked about maybe the second week of June. And that would be the eleventh and the twelfth. Does that sound all right? And then Dawn's not here tonight, but we'd have to double check with him.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, is we need to check with the moderator.
So let's use that for the straw man, for tonight.
Yeah, for the eleventh and the twelfth.
Yep.
To set the town meeting. And then like, they really don't do town meetings, I mean, they don't do specials anymore, so we would just take and put anything for FY twenty right at the beginning of the annual, like we did last year. Okay. Yeah, that's what I was gonna go into next. And now, we thought we'd let probably open the warrant tonight for the annual, and if anybody has anything from, you know, FY twenty to go on it. And then we would close it by March thirty-first. How does that sound?
Sounds good to me.
March thirty-first, we would close the warrant.
Motion to open the warrant for the annual town meeting for June eleven slash twelve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and then, another thing we were talking about, maybe we should, we shouldn't maybe be open, a lot of times, you know how we reopen it, and then we close it again, maybe this year we shouldn't. We should just keep it the way it is, once the articles are submitted. That's something we talked about even with the advisory board today. Because a lot of times you do that, then you're leaving yourself open for more things to come on.
Well, the one thing that we can't do though, is we can't preclude anything that gets put through citizens' petitions, because the state law says we have to get it added in.
They will all, we'll have to know, we put out a word saying that everything had to be in by the thirty-first.
Yeah, so, so I think in terms of submissions internal to the department heads, all of that.
But we could even make it aware, make it aware to people, if they want to put it as citizens' petition, they have to be in by March thirty-first.
Yeah, if we have to dip and dodge around that, we can.
We can, we should.
But at least put a stake in the ground.
Yeah.
Yeah, the thirty-first.
I just, I just don't want to set us up for a situation where somebody claims we're trying to do something outside of.
No, when I.
No, just, I think these are straw men anyway. I mean, we're already starting with Dawn, worrying about Dawn's schedule, and he's not here tonight.
Right.
And then another thing we, we all discussed today was sending out the warrant this year.
Through the mail.
Yep, through the mail. The reason we had stopped years ago was because a lot of them went into the basket. But if we can, you know, try to get them out to the town, so the people will know what is on these, it will probably make it much easier for when they come to town meeting. And I guess the town clerk said if the, there wasn't enough money in the budget with the advisory board, he said he would take money out of his budget and send it. Because we could, last time we did it, times we did it, we always had a bulk rate, they would, we had a bulk rate to do.
Yeah, we did it back about three or four years ago.
So he said he is willing to do that, to get that out. And they try to like to get it out by May first, and then it'll give people a while, you know, to look at it. And if we do have it available, we could even have some of them out if people don't get them for the, for the annual town election, which is the first Monday in May.
Right.
So we could, we'll have those books all set up, and we'll have them ready.
Yeah, one thing that I think has worked well in the past is if you put a collection point up at the post office as well, the people that don't want it, a lot of times will turn it back in. And what we could do is do a first run printing that's just for what's getting mailed, and like a little bit of overage to have here for pickup if people are interested. And then use, see how much we get recollected at the post office.
And then tell them like we have before, we've always put a little thing on the bottom, and you'll bring this with you to town meetings.
Yeah.
So you'll have it.
Great.
So, I think that kind of, yeah.
For tonight, anyway.
Yep.
So that sounds good to everybody?
Yep.
Yep, so, so we voted to eleventh and twelfth, pending confirmation of moderator availability.
And then maybe if we do have to do a run over to another night, if we don't finish everything up, we could maybe do it the following Friday?
Right, that would be reserved.
Or the following Thursday.
Or the following Thursday, but we don't, we talked to, we don't, we don't want to go late into Thursday because people have to work that night. That's why we said we could just do the budget that night.
Yeah, two hours and then.
Yeah, a couple hours, and that would be it, and we could probably start it maybe even at six-thirty.
Right.
Yeah, if we're not doing a special, yeah.
Yeah.
Six-thirty, nine, it'll give us two and a half hours.
Yeah, I think that would be good. What is the, what's the Friday after?
Nineteenth.
The nineteenth. It's the nineteenth, Clarence, the nineteenth. And if we had to put some on the nineteenth.
I also have a recommendation, and maybe we should check with Steve on this, is that, two weeks prior to that, like the end of May, if, if the budget is done in a timely manner, the way that they're currently scheduling it to do, find out if they want to do a public hearing, one of the Thursday nights, it's normally one of their meetings.
That is, that's something I.
Around the budget.
I have, I had suggested that many years ago, to select, because a lot of the communities do that. They do have a public hearing, and they have people, if there are any questions on any of the articles, they can answer them, and that'll make town meeting run more smoothly, because they don't have all these questions.
Yeah, they can ask the questions, and if they don't get answered that night, they can have the materials prepped for the beginning of town meeting, so they can hand it out there.
For many years to try, and nobody was ever in agreement with it, but I think it's a good idea to do that.
No, let's do it.
Yeah, just ask them if they'd be willing to host a public hearing sometime prior to the town meeting around the budget.
And, and then another thing, I think what we're gonna do, Mike and Dawn, and Dawn Fagino, went to see a demonstration done at another town on these electrical voting machines that they can use at town meeting. So he has a company that is willing to come in and do one for free.
Okay.
So that's another thing we thought, for the approval of the selectmen, that we would do that.
So I'll make a motion to support if we can get a free trial.
Oh, yeah, there's a free trial, they will come in and do a free trial, and I think it's a good idea. And that, that's another thing, I guess the, makes the meeting run much smoother now. And then he talked about, didn't he say something about that, or maybe he told me about buying it regionally with some other towns?
Yeah, if it were regional, then it makes some sense, but if it's one town, forget it.
Regional, and then, you know, everybody has their meetings differently, and so we can swap it back from town to town.
CMRPC, I think he said they were, there might be a grant.
Yeah. Okay.
Dave, does Madam Michigan?
Sure.
I was at that meeting, and they're talking about Warren and a couple of the towns are on board with it. As long as we all get different meetings on our days, or on any town.
Different dates for our meetings, yes.
It was really a good, good thing.
So Warren's on board, they think? That's.
That's where the meeting was.
Oh, is that where it was?
Yeah.
Because Mike had asked me to go, and I had something else going. Yeah, oh, you went over?
Yeah, yeah, it was very.
Good, okay, all right, so that's all set here. So, our next thing is, make a motion to sign the presidential primary election, which is the third day of March.
Motion to sign.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then, they can put the date in, when they want to sign it. The next on our is agenda is special use permits. These are for the lakes again. And we can vote all, all at one time.
Read away.
Okay.
I said read away.
Read away, okay. Three twenty-eight, twenty twenty on Quabog Pond is the Mass Bass Alliance. Two nine, twenty twenty, the Quabog, on Quabog is the East Brookfield Recreation Department. Next one is five three, twenty twenty on South Pond in Brookfield, and that's on, that's from the Northeast Bass Angles. And seven twenty-five, twenty twenty on Quabog Pond for the Mass Bass Alliance. I have a motion to.
Motion to sign.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we have some appointments, and I'll leave them all off, and we can.
Hold on there once.
Okay, we have one for an Assistant Animal Control Officer, and his name is Travis Stewart, and it would term would expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty. And the next one is for Carol Plum to go on to the Board of Registers. And that would expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty. Next one is Recreation Committee for Timothy Nye, and it would expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty. And Michael Lawrence for Recreation Committee, and that would be June thirtieth, twenty twenty. We'll have a motion to approve those.
Motion to approve with the.
With Travis Stewart being conditional on the, conditional pending a background check.
All in favor? Oh, one minute, now, with the, the other two that going on Recreation Committee, have they had a core check?
I'm not sure if they give them core checks.
They probably should, if they're working around children. You should probably mention that to.
I will, I will.
Let Jeff know.
To Jeff Landine.
So I don't know that we've done that historically, we may need to come out with some sort of a policy letter around that.
I'm surprised we haven't, but I think that's important.
Yeah, see what his practice is.
Yeah.
But I think that is important, if they're gonna be working with children, they should have a core check.
I know I do.
Who do we currently have certified to run the quarries?
We don't have anyone, I'm gonna get certified, that's what I was talking to Molly about today.
In the meantime, I think Peter is certified.
Oh, he is, oh, Peter.
Because Peter Martel took it upon himself to get certified when that whole thing went down. So, so if you could just check with him and see if he'd be willing to do it for those.
Thank you.
And then we even talked about even having the police department do it too. Nobody up here wanted to get certified before Karen had agreed to do it.
Appreciate you being willing to do that.
Okay, the next one is for a Class Two provisional license for a used car dealer license for Class Two, for, what is his name, Richard Ross. And it's DBA, B and R Coachworks. And what he wants to do is he wants to close the business, so to sell second-hand motor vehicles, so this license would expire on eight thirty-one twenty.
Right, motion to.
Motion for that?
Second.
All in favor? What did he explain to?
I, I read the email with all the information about it, so fundamentally, he hasn't really been compliant with a lot of things.
Yeah.
But in order to make it possible for him to stand it down appropriately, we're doing this, so.
Correct.
I finished that motion, sorry.
So we seconded, so we just need to vote it?
Vote it.
All in favor?
Aye.
We heard anything yet on the clam box, he's, he wants to open next month.
Yes, he has a, he actually has a hearing, an alcohol license hearing on the eleventh.
Okay, because I know he's getting ready. All right, we have right here, now, we have, moving on, we have to sign CMRPC grant invoices. Okay, and we have six of them here to sign. And they're all FY twenty, FY seventeen grants. Do you want me to cover the cost of all of these?
I'll just read them off.
Yeah, just read them off.
All right, it's the ADA Plan for Hayden Hyde Design, fifteen post-road testing, and the Senior Center Design Housing Rehab, and that was eight thousand forty-three dollars and six cents. And then the next one is for FY twenty eighteen Grant, number twelve, CMRPC, Hayden Hyde and Housing Rehab, nine thousand three hundred and nineteen dollars and five cents. And then Lennard Engineering, for Engineering Hayden and Hyde. And this was the FY twenty eighteen Grant for three thousand three hundred and seventy-four dollars and thirty-eight cents. And then it's FY twenty seventeen CBG Grant for BETA fifteen post-road testing for two thousand nine hundred and forty-five dollars. And then we have twenty seventeen CDBG Grant for the BETA fifteen post-road, is the thousand, one thousand six hundred and fifteen dollars. And then another one for twenty seventeen CBG Grant for BETA fifteen post-road for fourteen, four thousand nine hundred and forty dollars. And I would like a motion for the Board of Selectmen to sign these.
Motion to sign.
Second.
And this is really the closeout invoices. We have two stickies here.
Oh, is it two stickies?
Yep.
Okay.
Do you have two or just the one?
Just the one.
Just the one.
Oh, now we just have that.
This one's got two.
Okay, now, next one on our agenda is to sign the CMR PC Contract Amendment Number One. This is, uh, with the town, with Central Mass Regional Planning for FY twenty-eight Massachusetts Community Development Fund Administration Services. And, uh, attached to the signatures in our agreement effective on the twenty-sixth of November twenty-eighteen is hereby amended to reflect the following change. Article six, time of performance is six point one is extended to June thirtieth, twenty-twenty, with the exception of closeout activities. And if this, on Justice, uh, do we agree on this and just, we need, agree to have, uh, just the chairman signing?
Yep, and that, and motion to sign.
Motion to sign. And do you have anything to tell you about this?
Yeah, I'll go second. And what, what this does is, is, it's about seven thousand dollars if I, if my memory is correct from that meeting, where, uh, we can help with a hous- there may be one housing rehab, um, project that we can take care of in the meantime.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, so we opted with of.
An extension so that we can.
Yes, the extension will allow us to get one more project in.
What it sounded like was one more. Because there's a bunch of others that just wouldn't meet the criteria.
And that extension is solely into June.
Yeah.
I think that also allows for the invoices for the other six projects to come in, because I know they said that it was going to be really tight to try and get even the six that were already approved, get all the, the invoicing back from the contractors, so.
I'm going to do this up tonight, too.
Oh, because, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, um, I guess we had talked about a solar committee, but instead of doing that, Laurie has recommended that Maureen Morano do Schedule Z as a municipal clerk until Laurie has time to do it next year, because Maureen is an accountant and she said she's willing to do it.
Okay, that'd be great.
Super.
The next one is. Do we have correspondence?
Yeah, correspondence.
No correspondence? Yeah.
You got a whole bunch.
We have correspondence. We have here, something here from, uh, it came from the, the governor and the lieutenant governor, say, saying that our fire department, congratulations, uh, we have been awarded three thousand fifty-five dollars for student awareness of fire education and two thousand fifty-five dollars for senior safe grants. And that's to Brookfield, so congratulate Peter on going for these grants. I don't know if Kathy helped him with those at all.
Not, not those, I don't think.
All right, and now, this is from the Historical Commission. It says, during the Historical Commission meeting on January ninth, twenty-twenty, Thomas Moore asked for a motion from the Commission stating that the slab from the building at the campground not be removed. Donald Faginow made a motion when any buildings or structures are removed from what is known as campground and any cement slabs are left intact. Tom seconded the motion and all approved. And he is taking this motion to his tribal council and he asks that I give this motion to the Board of Selectmen, and this is from Lois Solari, Secretary.
So more, more information on the campground. So we have three buildings left to go, or had three buildings. One was taken down, there's a concrete slab that's left and remaining that Tom's concerned because of its proximity to where we believe a significant number of graves are in fact, that, to not do anything. And I don't think anybody's opposed to not doing anything. The second building on the main site, um, Kathy's working with, uh, the Attorney General's Office for monies to tear, tear that building down. And again, ba- based on the clan's wish to not do anything with that slab, we'll leave that slab in place as well. Uh, and then the issue is, and as late as today, uh, there's some concern about the roller rink and the paperwork that, uh, moved it to town, uh, property. And so Kathy's got some work to do with KP or the assessor or both to prove that in fact, the roller rink is in fact town property. And then with that, we could take the third building down.
Now, did, when you bring up the roller rink, and Al had talked to me about it last week, I think, who, he didn't say that that one's actually owned by the town.
It needs to be.
It needs to be, and he was kind of wondering who owned, you know, who had owned it before, so I gave him way back to the beginning of time who owned it. So I don't know if that's helped him out at all.
Okay, well, again, what we need is to, a clear line of sight to town ownership so that the AG's office can give us the additional grant monies. Because they're willing to fund it, but they just need to, uh, to make sure that it's clear title that it's town property.
Because he really hasn't been able to find anything, so I guess he was going to research it.
So that's where we're headed, so. So it may be a two-step process to finish. But what, what will happen, uh, taking down that last building is that there's signage that we put in the grant so that we will have some nice signs that talk about the site, um, and what's, what's there. So go from there.
That's good. Our next one is a disclosure from a municipal employee. And this is Herbert, uh, Duggan Junior, he's a reserve police officer. And I guess he is, he, he owns a business, but he's willing to do all of the work on all of the cruises and things that, that need to be done for no charge and he won't get any financial gain out of this at all.
This is just a disclosure to that effect. That's just a disclosure.
Yeah, that's just his, that's just his disclosure. And so I, I had filled it out so he can have it, you know, and the town clerk keeps it on file. And this is also a thank you to Peter for the review of the following. Uh, this is from FEMA, is this letter is to notify you of engineering data models and draft data being used in the federal emergency management, the FEMA, ongoing flood project in the Quintavogue Watershed. As discussed during the flood risk review meeting held on September sixteenth, twenty-nineteen, FEMA's goal is to offer useful, credible data and fair process to help you make informed decisions to continue building a safer and stronger community. This data was developed by FEMA, a mapping partner, Compass PTS JV, and it provided the best available calculation of where water will collect and flow in the event of floods based on current conditions. And it has a map here, if anybody's interested in looking now or if they want to look at it later.
No, I can look at it later.
Yep.
And I guess that's all for our correspondence. Okay, now I would like, uh, to make a motion to go into executive board session at seven-thirty.
You have that motion?
Second.
Wink and I?
Tonight or I?
Toff and I.
Okay, and, and then we will go back into regular meeting and adjourn.
Do you want to read that one sentence?
Yeah, I'll read that one sentence. Okay. Number three is discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, litigation, if any open meeting may have any detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation per par, position of the public body and the chair so de-cliffs.
That's true.